Council meeting on October 5th, the order. We do have your, or form, let's stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pagers, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approve the agenda. The agenda is posted in accordance with the open meeting law and here I place all agenda items on this table for the discussion. And under the consent agenda, we're going to have to receive a petition from the Franciscan Sisters. So that'd be E on the consent. What's the wish of the council on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition added.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Councilman Hercock to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve of the minutes, the copy of the minutes for the special work session of September 21st, 2015, and the regular meeting of September 21st, 2015 are enclosed. What's the wish of the council on the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Canopla, second by Councilman Hanson to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve of the bills, approve checks 92730 through 92815, billing $194,125.27. Mr. Gushak?
Page one. Do you have any thing to bring up? Page two.
What CMP are we property tax, Laurie?
Um, Central Minnesota Tool Building. The old Central Minnesota Tool Building, yes.
Thank you.
I've got a question, teeth? Last time it was drunk for.
Page three.
I just had a question on page three. We paid for appraisals for two different lots. Really $400 for an empty lot for appraisal? Seems like that's what it was for us at our house.
Yeah. That's what we were charging.
Page four. Page five. Hearing no concerns, I'll make the motion to approve the bills for $194,125.27.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak and second by Councilman Wiltergren to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donation, presentation, proclamations. I guess we got a presentation to the public to welcome our new city administrator, Mr. John Rodmacher. I can welcome you and look forward to working.
Well, thank you. Nice to be here. Look forward to opportunity to be a part of this community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. On to the consent agenda. 2015 Employee Health Insurance Renewal from 2016, approved. Application for Exemplishment, Rappel St. Mary's Church, November 22nd, 2015, approved. Morrison County Attorney's Prosecution Report, August 2015, received. Resignation of Brent Ambul for Energy Environmental Committee, accept. And a petition from the Franciscan Sisters, accept. What's the wish of the council on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Councilman Canopla on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Greg will work on his new appointments. Had he moved, stopped the city limit, so it disqualifies him, so. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings, public hearing, appeal zoning administrator decision on fence. Worries about Williams, consider. Correct?
On, uh... Well, to give you some history on the fence at 14424 Elm Street, the city issued a fence permit in April of 2015. In August, the city received a complaint regarding that fence that it was incorrectly installed. We notified the property on August 20th regarding the city code, the state's which code was there. Basically, the good side needs to face out. At the first 30 feet from the property line, it needs to be at five foot in height. The applicant requested a public hearing in front of the planning commission that was held on September 14th. The planning commission agreed with the zoning administrator that it indeed violated the city code and that the good side needs to face out as well as the five-foot height restrictions. We did receive a letter from one of the buddy property owners, Samuel Land Trust, supporting the planning commission's findings. And just to give you an idea, this is what the fence looked like previously. It was, you know, the kind of like a good side on both of them. And this is what was installed, what's there today. This is on the, I believe it's the west side, and this is on the north side of the property. The section over here was in place prior to being annexed into the city, so that was, that's not part of the discussion tonight in terms of the fence permit. But the new portion on the west as well as the new portion on the north is what we, what's being appealed this evening. That's all I really have for it. Unless you want to hear from the applicant?
You do have an affidavit, right?
When you have the affidavit of publication, correct.
Laurie, got anything you want to add?
When I talked to Ben about getting this permit, I called Ben Olson. I told him exactly what I wanted to do. I said, "We have a fence that's already there. I said, 'We want to take that down, that's that X fence.' I says, 'We want to continue on with our previous property, our privacy fence, putting it up the same way, same height, same everything.'" He said, "Come out and look at it." Came out, he says, "Yeah, he says, 'Go ahead, draw me a map.'" He says, "Get your per-" He says, "I'll write up the permit." He says, "Everything's a go." Then I received a letter saying that the good side had to be facing the opposite way, and it should be on my permit. It's not on my permit nowhere, stating this fact that I had to have a good side facing the other way. So we put it up just how I told Ben, and it's, I don't know, I guess the issue started with Bill Anderson complaining about it, which has been a 30-year ongoing thing with him. But he's never complained about the fence that's already existing there until we installed this fence right there. I don't know, I guess we had okay from Ben Olson. We thought we were doing right. We didn't know we were doing wrong, and so we installed it.
Regarding the, um, the fence direction, originally, we had a two-page permit application for a fence. The first sheet is what the applicant would fill out regarding, you know, the name, address, that type of stuff. And then the second sheet is all of our ordinance requirements, so indicate, you know, the good side facing out. We did receive one-page application from, from the applicant. Whether they got it from the website or whoever, I'm not sure where they obtained it. But we received just the new one page, we did not receive the second. Signatures on the first, we really don't care necessarily about the second, but that's where all the information is pertaining to, we've got side facing out, the height restrictions, that type of stuff.
We don't have to draw lowering the first sections past the fire height like we have to down to four or five feet tall, but it just, I don't feel we should have to turn it around when we had the okay from Ben Olson to put it up the way we told him we were going to put it up. We're going to continue on with the existing privacy fence, and that's exactly what we did. He says, "Yeah, go ahead, just come get your permit."
Do you have any questions, Laurie?
I don't have any questions, but I do have something to say.
Will you wait for discussion once we get that public input?
I'll wait.
So, any input from the public?
Robin Hetzel, 807 First Street, Southeast. Two things. Number one, it's common courtesy that you'd want the public and your neighbors to see the nice side. Even if there wasn't an ordinance, that's common sense. That's human, right? Second, you had an issue with a Bruce Thompson, and he had the same basic thing where his neighbors had the bad side facing him. I think you have to do the same thing here that you did in that case, or you might be setting a dangerous precedence again.
Anyone else wish to speak? Third and final call, anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, closed public hearing at 7:41. Open for discussion?
Well, I'm on the planning commission, and the way we looked at it is if you go with the ordinance, it has to change. But then, like she was saying, it wasn't really her fault. I almost think it needs to be done right, but maybe the city might have to go in there and change it, you know, because it's kind of our fault for not telling her exactly what is required. She didn't see the, see the sheets or anything, so. My field has to, has to be corrected, you know, just to make sure the ordinance is complied with. But it's also our responsibility because it's pretty much on our heads for not getting the information to her.
I can't believe that Ben gave it, sent it out and that it wasn't there. That's been a rule for years, that you always put the good side to your neighbor. I mean, I can't believe that Ben would send it out to her that it doesn't say that on that paper that she got. I thought Greg just said there was a second page to it, that that's...
The second page of the permit application, which is, they can get it one of two ways. They can pick it up at City Hall, or they can print it out from, from the website. So if they pick it up from City Hall, they get both pages. If they print it out from the website, they may have only printed out one page and not the second page. And, you know, unfortunately, if they didn't read the second page, that's not necessarily our fault. I do have a copy of the, of the permit application as well as the sketch that was provided, and nothing, nothing in the sketch indicates that the good side was facing in. So, you know, unless somebody specifically told Ben that the good side would be going in, you know, he would have said it needs to comply with city, city code.
When was the fence installed?
Permit was issued in April.
Yeah, permit was issued in April. We got the complaint in August, so sometime between those, those points.
Okay, so it was not installed prior to annexation?
There was an existing fence like the, like this one here that was on both the west side and the north side. If you look at the next sheet there, you can see, and it's hard to see there, but you can see where the posts are, are cut off for the new one to be installed. And that's the same way on the, on the back, to my understanding.
The first panel, the part going to the left on the bottom picture, we're already there, though.
This was already existing. This is on the northeast corner, and this is the east property line. Those were existing prior to the fence permit being built, yes, as well as coming into the city. Those were existing.
And is there an appreciable difference in appearance between the front and back side?
The front is, I mean, you don't see any of these, these supports. You know, it's just a flush fence that you see on the, the good side, if you will. The back side has the, has the supports and the posts.
So the supports are on both the front and the back?
Just on the back.
Was it brought up during the planning commission by, did anybody ask Ben if he had said to go ahead? Because I talked to him about it, he was kind of, he said he could have, but he didn't remember it, or I shouldn't be quoting because I don't remember it exactly. But you know if Ben had approved it that way, to just continue with the same?
I don't know. I mean, I can't speak for, for Ben. I can relate what happened at the planning commission, what my discussion's been with Ben, as well as, you know, what I've seen on the, on the permit here. So I, I don't believe there was ever a discussion necessarily about continuing the way it was before, and I know there's nothing on the sketch that shows the good side being in.
Because originally, my thoughts were similar, and I'm going to lay it right out there because it'll show up somewhere. Laurie's a Covert's employee, she doesn't report directly to me. I make my decisions, which I think best represents the city at all times, but I'm sure that'll come into question because of my comments. But originally, I had been thinking similar to on the line of Frank, where if that had been approved, I just wish we could have settled this without having, coming to a public meeting. I wish I said it, if I had any abilities, I would have went out there and helped turn the fence around, but it would have looked worse once I was done with it, and we've got more complaints. So that went direct to, I didn't remedy it anything, but that's the line I was going on. I don't think it's fair to the neighbors to have to see something that is not compliant. But if we did indeed say, continue with it the way it is, I, I just, it bothers me that someone else has to go and turn it, put more money into it to turn it back around, so I, I don't know if we have all the information to make a decision.
I'm extremely skeptical that Ben would have said that because when Ben was on board, he pulled together a new fence ordinance that clarified the good side versus the bad side, where the posts had to be and such. So I'm very skeptical he would have said, either A, continue on with the way it is, or go ahead and put the good side in, just because he was involved with crafting that ordinance to define what is the good side.
I wish Ben was here because my take on the planning commission meeting was Ben felt like he wasn't sure what he said as far as that went, and he didn't argue that point. So, but Ben was here right now, at least he could clarify himself, you know. Maybe my take was wrong, I'm not sure. But, uh, is there a way we can hold this off until we do talk to Ben and we actually get a statement from him?
We can table it if you want, but you've got to remember that's six months ago. Do you remember what you said last week? Same as the same, it's only a fence permit he's issued in the last six months.
It's so little, I don't remember.
Congratulations.
I can't, I have a, what I think is a decent comparable example here, and I, I work in insurance. So if I'm having a conversation with a policyholder and I misquote something that's in the policy and give wrong information, which it happens, and then I go back and look, what I say does not override what the policy says, or in this case, the ordinance, and I look at it the same way. I'm not saying, I have no idea what Ben indicated. It's my contention, what he said verbally doesn't matter. What's in writing?
Even if he says okay?
Unfortunately, yes.
Then he should have done the check on it while it was being put up?
Well, I don't disagree with that either.
But you know, the, uh, the agreement or the ordinance that we had adopted relative to the inspection is that, wasn't there some discretion on the part of the inspector and that he was able to make allocations or changes for certain things? I'm, I'm not sure how that would fit this situation. But what is on the other side of the fence? Is it a neighbor's yard, or is it a forested area?
On the west side, there's, this is Simon Land Trust on the west, right over here. There's a number of trees.
So is there a residence within those trees, or is that just a forested area?
Farther back there is, yes. And then on the, on the north, this is the, the Evergreen Terrace, the Roche Developments that's over there. This is the, um, the easement going back to one of Alan Smith's properties. So that's, that's what you see here is the easement road. And if you want, I can pull up an aerial. So here's the, the north fence, and here's the west, the west fence. So I mean, yes, there's a number of trees here, there's trees over here, this is where the new development is being constructed.
And it, I'm not sure if the pine trees would complain?
The property owner of the pine trees has them.
And we got to follow the ordinance, we just can't say if there's trees there, you don't have to follow it, you know. In my eye, it has to be changed one way or another because of the ordinance. Or else it's like what was brought up earlier, there's other residents, this same situation hasn't arisen before, and we had to pull with the ordinance, so.
Hope you're not different than Police Chief Sherman saying you can drive 55 through town, but that doesn't mean he's not going to stop and give you a ticket. Rule the rules.
I believe one of the, the planning commission members, you know, hit the nail on the head. Ignorance is not, not an offense, you know, and it's unfortunate that that amount of offense would have to be turned around, but that is what the ordinance currently indicates.
Ignorance of the law.
True.
Because I don't want Laurie to think we're...
So really what they need to do is just take the boards off and put them on the other side?
Correct.
Isn't that the whole, just the basic kind of thing?
Yeah, it's like seven-foot section, your, uh, the supports that run horizontal, you just take them off the poles and flop the whole thing around. But that's quite a bit. That's a big area. It's going to take, a couple guys, it'll take a couple days, you know, just to swap that. The city crew got in there, it might take less...
How word can I say?
Terrible what you say.
Can you just add?
Maybe sentence to serve.
Can you just add another two-by-four on that side to make it look like the other, so that both sides are the same?
Straight, straight to the inside.
I think the problem with them coming to the posts, because our ordinance does define that the posts are also on the bad side. So the sporting structure, whether it's that horizontal board or the vertical boards, qualifies as a bad side. So directly answer it? No.
And how high is the fence?
I believe it's a six-foot fence right now. So there's really two things that need to be addressed. One, the good side of the fence needs to go up to the neighbors, and the five, the area that's within 30 feet of the property line needs to be reduced down to the five-foot height limit.
So you're saying that a change on the comply for or not?
No.
And what's the timeline on? Do you even stand, is there no banks to turn it around, or?
Well, the, the planning commission did, um, extend the timeframe in terms of how long or when it needs to be completed, and I want to say it was 60 days from when the planning commission yelled their, their, their meeting. So they would have until... So, yeah. So the 60-day began on September 15th rather than August 20th, so.
November?
November 15th, basically.
And how close is that property line? Will there be any problems with trespassing or potential?
Potentially.
What happens with that? Is that fence right on, on line almost, or is it back?
It's very close to it. It's very close to the property line. From what the, from what the iron show, it's very close to it.
What are we looking to accomplish right now, Mr. President?
Looking to accomplish if we have to turn fence around or if we do not, if we're going to allow her to keep it?
Okay, so...
Yes, not conforming or to conform with city ordinance.
Okay. So how does the motion need to be worded here? To not consider, or consider, then vote up and down?
Either...
To accept a recommendation from the planning commission or not.
Their recommendation is to change it?
Correct. To come into compliance?
And the appeal, I was looking at the appeal, it doesn't ask for the city to take responsibility or anything, it just asks, they're appealing what the planning, uh, and zoning commission, they're appealing that decision. So, uh, I guess if you're...
So the plan, the planning commission already said? No.
No.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the recommendation from the planning commission.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second. By Councilman Gushak to accept the recommendation from the planning commission and to deny the appeal, basically. Any other discussion?
So that's to meet what the code is?
Correct.
It's only going to be part of the fence that's facing out?
North and west.
Majority of north and west.
Correct. Majority of north, that one first section would still be along with facing in.
And I, I agree that we need to conform, but I also have concerns about, um, what all happened here and without, even if Ben did say that it was okay, I just, I, I don't feel good about this, no matter who it is, because it's going to cost time and money.
It, I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I, but I don't know what he said at the permit time, that's...
Can I make a comment? I'm going to escape from voting because I work with Laurie daily. We talked with Laurie when they were putting the fence up, when they had the okay to put up the fence before they began, and Ben came out, looked at it, we said, she said, "We're going to put it up just like it is," and he said, "Okay." There were no regulations she had on her permit when she called him later. He said, "Well, turn your permit over, it's on the back of the, back of it." She didn't have, she had one page. I don't know how she came to have one page, but there was one page and no regulations.
I would, uh, I'm going to vote on what is laid out before us. If Laurie is not happy with the decision, she can request the city come out, then we can discuss at that point if we feel we're obligated to go out and change it. But that's not even a request on her part right now. All she's doing is appealing the planning and zoning commission's decision. Nothing else is said, you know, so, and she has that option, she can come in and request. We've had requests before for trying out water main or service to hoses and stuff. We've had requests before for trying out water main or service to hoses and stuff. And we can entertain it and then discuss it and at that point decide what we're gonna do or, or not, you know?
I think the vote is tall tonight, let's kinda go forward. I have a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by, did I get a second yet?
No, I meant motion.
Hanson and Gushick, sorry. Motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Gushick. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
I just want clarified where I do abstain, right?
I abstain, yes.
Lettings, award bids, declared surplus items, correct?
We received bids for our surplus, additional surplus items. You have that in front of you under page nine of your council packet. The highlighted items are the items that we would recommend awarding the, the items to. One thing to, to take note, our loader, we were anticipating a minimum bid of forty thousand five hundred. We did get a high bid of forty-eight thousand five hundred fifty dollars for that. So tonight we'd be looking at awarding the bids to the three highlighted items. And then if the, in the event that there's additional, you know, globes and luminaires and sunup, et cetera, left over, it would go to the next bidder at that point in time.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Lowdergren, second by Alderman Hercock. To award the bids on surplus items, discussion?
Yes, how did that price come out for the loader compared to what you had expected trading?
It was about eight thousand five hundred dollars more. Or excuse me, eight thousand fifty? Fifty dollars more.
So now, my question is on that, they're not gonna take possession of that until we got it delivered, correct?
Correct.
And they're, you understand that?
Yep, on the bid form, we had an anticipated delivery date of December first for them to get the loader. Our anticipated delivery for our loader is the middle of November. So there's, there's a couple week, you know, overlap there. If we get it sooner, then they would get there sooner as well, but it's once we get ours delivered.
That's when they drive you to the diner.
I have a question about the globes. Is that just for one globe?
That's each, yes.
Uh, not for the whole, only for one. That's what I mean, this wasn't a bid for each one of them for the whole works, that's a...
This is, they can take as many as they want?
They can take as many as they want.
Yep, this is for each globe, so if they wanted ten globes, it'd be ten times the money.
So in other words, they can take every single one of them?
If they so choose. I'd be happy with that.
Okay.
So you have a motion by Lowdergren, second by Hercock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Under new business lease agreement, Franklin Outdoor Advertising. Ben?
We talked about this in committee and we had some questions as to when the site was built and the ordinance that was in place regarding billboards at the time. And the recommendation at this point would be to table this until your next meeting.
Got a motion to table?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Gushick and second by Conopla, table? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Table till next meeting. Ordinance seventy-seven, six series, amend city chapter code. Administration and general government update, introduce. Ben?
Again, this, we talked about this in, earlier in the work session. This is a rewrite of chapter two of the current city code. This is based on information that we received from American Legal Publishing Corporation. We hired, they're retained by Cleveland, so the cities to look at city codes and ordinances. We did contract with them to look at our city code to give us some suggestions regarding the wording and language and statutory requirements that we have. The code is quite lengthy, I think it's twenty-five or twenty-six pages in length. Didn't do an awful lot of adjustments to the code. I discussed those in committee or in the earlier meeting, some of the adjustments that were made. And at this point, and I will explain those when we get into, at the next meeting. If you don't mind, I'll explain those at that time, what some of the adjustments were. At this point, we recommend that you introduce the meeting so that we can look at adoption at your next, introduce the ordinance so we can look at adoption at your next meeting.
Do you have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion to introduce.
Motion by Councilman Hanson to introduce. Resolution two thousand fifteen dash seventy-seven, order feasibility report, surface utilities, Third Street Northeast, public improvement three seventy-four, correct?
Yeah, as we spoke earlier in the, the work session, we've got a number of projects that we'd be looking at completing in twenty sixteen. As I mentioned, this is more than what we can actually afford. But I wanted to be able to start the process and actually get prices or estimates pulled together so that we can have a better understanding on what we can afford to prioritize our, our projects. First one that we're looking at is Third Street Northeast. That is basically an extension of the projects that we've done in twenty fourteen as well as twenty fifteen. We've been looking at completing the next three blocks, all the way up to the railroad tracks with both street and utilities, curb better sidewalks for that section of, of street.
What's the wish of the council on resolution point fifteen dash seventy-seven?
Make a motion to order in a feasibility report.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Mayor Zilka on resolution twenty fifteen seventy-seven. Any discussion?
Uh, just a question. I, I know this is the one with the private water service, correct?
No, this is Third Street. Third Avenue was the private water service. Third Street is an extension...
Get on the right page, huh?
This continuation of Third Street?
Yep.
Basically from the tracks to?
Tracks, basically three blocks, so.
To meet up?
Okay.
No, I, I...
Correct, yeah.
This one includes the raw water line?
Yeah, this does include the raw water line, yeah. Now, one thing I'll point out, by ordering in the feasibility report, it just allows staff to pull together the pricing and get the, the cost pulled together and get the report on what's there currently and what we've been looking at options for improvements. It does not necessarily say we're going to construct it next year. Those are, you know, a number of steps that we're going to be looking at, that you'll have to vote on coming up here. But it does start that, that process, so we've been looking at starting that tonight.
Quick question for you, what is the cost to do a feasibility report? Is that mostly your staff time or is there other staff time or outside sources or?
It's our, our staff time. Ballpark, about three to four thousand dollars. We will do some preliminary topo to get an idea of what we have out there in terms of elevations to make sure what we're proposing in the report is actually gonna work. So ballpark numbers we're looking at, three to four thousand.
So in reality, if we do a feasibility report on five of these, we do two. We just threw ten grand out the window.
Not necessarily out the window. We did one on, on Third Avenue, which will be coming up here in, in a bit. We'll be able to use that information this year. So we'll basically amend it, make sure everything is consistent. It's not like you're just throwing it out the window. These are all areas that we wanna complete at some point in the future here. But yeah, it's, we'll be able to, as long as we continue, keep them on the, on the agenda or on the plate for upcoming projects, it's not like they're throwing money out the window.
So majority of the work is reusable? It's not, we're not quoting, you're not giving bid prices on asphalt and stuff like that to change it on a regular basis?
That, that'll be in a future, in a future discussion where we actually do bids. There's probably about three or four votes that you guys have to approve before you can get to that, to that point.
So the feasibility reports can carry on from year to year to year, that really doesn't change that much, right?
The information will be there, but we'll have to review them once we do the fourth and ninth process again.
Right, but it's not gonna cost you another three, four grand to do that next time, true, right?
Third Avenue's gonna be a lot less expensive this time around because we've already done it. We'll just be amending what we, what we had.
What is the, the real cost as in services you need to hire out? Because if you, to me, if you say three to four thousand dollars for staff time, well, we're paying you to come to the office every day, no matter what, so it really doesn't matter what you do.
Our outside expenses would be soil borings if we decide to do those. We already did soil borings on Third Avenue, so we're not gonna incur that. We will likely have soil borings on Third Street, this particular item here, because we wanna see where the bedrock is at. Third Street, south of here, had bedrock right around the twelve to fourteen foot mark. And so we're gonna wanna know what that elevation is at on Third Street at this project to have a good idea of how much it costs. Ballpark wise, rock excavation is about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a yard. So that adds up real quick if you don't know where it's at. So we'll be looking at doing soil borings on, for sure, on Third Street.
And they, I should remember this, but I don't. Because we had to do some extra ones before.
Yep, we did some extra ones last year and you're looking to see how much they were?
Roughly.
I wanna say it was twenty-five hundred to two thousand bucks for those. I mean, we didn't get, on those, we weren't looking for detailed information, so they were less expensive. They had basically drilled down until they hit rock, go to the next hole, and they kept on doing that. So that's what brought the cost down on, on those soil borings.
So now I throw a whole nother wrench in the project. Now this is where you're gonna decide the roadway width, right?
True.
So we can continue on, on that road, basically, is what the plan is with the thirty-two foot?
That's correct, yes.
Instead of the thirty-six?
Yep.
Okay. The reason for that is traffic, traffic volumes?
Yes.
And this is, this would be like the third year of prod to finish up that street?
Correct.
So we have no concerns and once can, like Jeremy's line, we have no concerns about that width as far as the snow plowing, because I truly believe on those thirty-two footers that at some point we may need to look at one side of the road or something. Because I was, there was a truck parked on one side of the road and I was, it was on the west side of the road. I was going south and somebody came around the corner by the mirrors there and it was like...
There's a, there's a couple of things that we look at when we decide the thirty-two foot wide road. One is obviously gonna be the traffic volumes. The other is gonna be looking at, you know, the properties, do they have, you know, off-street parking? So do they have a garage and a, and a driveway? If all of them have, you know, basically no off-street parking, that's probably not gonna be a good situation because at that point, they're going to be parking in the street. If you look at the development just north of the golf course, that has thirty-two foot wide roads over there. We don't sign either side of that development for no parking and it's been that way since then. So I'm comfortable with thirty-two foot wide roadway in the right location, you know, looking at what, what's there currently and what volumes we're seeing for traffic.
That's good to know that you look at those things, Craig, I wasn't aware of that.
Yep.
So that's more common.
Is there anything going on under the street right now that's urgent?
I would have to look at the televising report. I don't know that answer just yet.
So you have a motion by Gushick, second by Zilka on resolution twenty fifteen seventy-seven? So resolution, call a roll.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lowdergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Anfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty fifteen seventy-eight, feasibility report, surface and utility improvements, Third Avenue Northeast. Correct?
Yep, as you recall, last year we looked at Third Avenue, reconstructing that portion of it. That has the private water line going underneath it. So we'd be looking at amending that feasibility report for basically today's ordinances as well as design factors. So tonight, we'd be looking at approval of that. We'd be looking at streets, storm, water, sanitary, basically a full reconstruction of that portion of it. As I mentioned earlier, we already have soil borings down in there and we already have a report. So this one should be relatively painless in terms of without preparing that, that report.
What's the wish of the council on resolution two thousand fifteen dash seventy-eight? Got a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Lowdergren. Resolution twenty fifteen dash seventy-eight, discussion?
Where's this one at on your priorities?
It's gonna depend what we find out on Fourth Avenue and Fourth Street. I would say the third is more important, fourth is more important. Third Avenue's probably gonna be number three right now. But that could all change once we, once we get a little bit deeper into, you know, what Third Street looks like as well as what some of the reports indicate on those other two in terms of how much it's gonna cost. But right now, it's looking like it's number three on the list.
So how are our projects looking for as far as being able to go for a bonding?
In terms of the percent?
Right.
Assessed?
Assessed.
I think we'll be able to make that twenty percent still. We'll look at that once we get, you know, the reports completed, but I, I believe we'll be able to hit that twenty percent assessed.
Because these are basically all gonna be red, red construction?
All reconstruction, yes.
Any other discussion? Ordinance or resolution, call a roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lowdergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Anfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash seventy-nine, for feasibility report, surface and utility improvements, Fourth Avenue Northeast, public improvement three seventy-three, correct?
The Fourth Avenue Northeast project, you need perspective of where we're located here. Walgreens is down the corner. Co-wards is off to the, to the right over there. This is Fourth Avenue just north of, of both of those locations. It's a two block stretch. We have issues with that, with that stretch of road. It's starting to break up as well as the storm sewer heaves in the wintertime. So you end up getting, storm sewer pushes the road up about an inch and a half. We have a difficult time clearing all the snow and ice away from, from the road. So that's why we'd be looking at, you know, doing something in this section here to try to repair the subgrade so that we don't have that, that frost heat every winter.
Apartment's on the north and south, so there's lots of traffic and tourists there?
That's correct, yes. Right at, right in the corner over here. This is residential and then we have the park over in this area.
What's the wish of the council on twenty fifteen dash seventy-nine?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilman Gushick on resolution two thousand fifteen dash seventy-nine. Further discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Lowdergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Anfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Gushick?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash eighty, for feasibility report, surface and utility improvements, Fourth Street Northwest, public improvement three seventy-four, correct?
On Fourth Street Northwest, we'd be looking at street reconstruction as well as water main and water service installation. And that one block stretch, the last two years, we've had a water main link over there, one each year. And as the guys have, you know, dug down, found that, that pipe, they've indicated that it's, you know, it's starting to corrode and it needs to be replaced. It's undersized in terms of volume. So what we'll be looking at doing is replacing that water main and stubbing it out such that in twenty eighteen, if the Trunk Highway twenty-seven project goes forward with utility reconstruction, we can loop the water main. Right now, it's just served on the north side, so we'd be looking at, you know, connecting that loop all the way through. Tonight, we'll be looking for approval to go ahead and conduct a feasibility report and start the process with chapter four.
What's the wish of the council on resolution twenty fifteen dash eighty?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock. Resolution two thousand fifteen dash eighty, discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll.
Zilka?
Yes.
Anfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lowdergren?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash eighty-one, for feasibility report, surface improvements, Elm Street, correct?
On Elm Street, this is a... On Elm Street, this is a petition project, so if, in order to make the project move forward into the feasibility report, we wouldn't need a five days' vote. We received a petition to reconstruct the cul-de-sac on the west end. We received that from fifty point four percent of the abiding property owners. We talked a little bit about it in regards to the work session here, about what would be required for that, that, that improvement. I know we did also mention, you know, kind of consensus in regards to traffic counts on there. If that's something you guys want before we actually order in the project, we can definitely do that, table this, this, this resolution until we get those traffic count volumes and then make a decision, otherwise we can move forward with feasibility tonight if you so choose.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to table it.
I'll second that.
And get some traffic counts, correct?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to have the traffic counts there, but also, did the...
Motion to table, there's no more discussion really.
Okay.
So I guess we direct them to do traffic counts and we're going to go forward. Got a motion by Bushick and second by...
Anfler.
Anfler? To table? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash eighty-two, order feasibility report, service improvement, sidewalks, correct?
Similar to what we've done this year, we'd be looking at doing sidewalk improvements. The Minnesota State recommends having rotation for your sidewalk inspections. In twenty fifteen, we reconstructed the sidewalks on the east side of town as well as a couple of areas that were notified to us in terms of tripping hazards on the west side. The central business district is one area that, that's a third component of it. So in twenty sixteen, the construction would be on the west side of town, and in twenty seventeen would be the central business district. So tonight, we'd be looking for approval to conduct the feasibility report and the inspections on the sidewalks on the west side of town so we can eliminate tripping hazards to comply with PDA improvements.
What's the wish of the council on resolution two thousand fifteen dash eighty-two?
Make a motion that we approve, two thousand fifteen eighty-two.
Second. Motion by Alderman Hercock and a second by Councilman Hanson, resolution two thousand fifteen dash eighty-two, discussion?
Yes, so, let's make this a little more accurate though. You know, as far as cost, I'm explaining to the public and everything, so I think we need to do this, but just keep that in mind, it'll be a lot closer this year.
I noticed these are all a lot earlier than projects released here, so we can hopefully get a better bid, thank you.
True.
As long as we don't drag your feet? Any other discussion? Resolution, call a roll, please.
Anfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lowdrin?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Clear, okay, new business is done, anybody got any reports? Go ahead.
How long is it?
Let's see. A few pages. Greg, we just wanted to express our appreciation to the staff in Little Falls City, all. We had planned a banquet, we held that country club over here going when the manager resigned in August. We thought our plans were ruined. Lori put our event back on the schedule, and thanks to her and other women in the office, we were able to hold our banquet as planned. The women did a great job of helping Julie Sledham prepare the food, set the tables, serve the food, and do all the cleaning up after the meal. We're fortunate to live in a town where people work so well together. Big thank you to all those involved, sincerely, Adam Lucey, Ken. Let her read.
Anyone else have anything?
You have a desk?
Yep. Rather territorial.
Announcements, planning commission public hearing, October twelfth at six thirty. Amend city chapter code eleven, section eleven oh seven, portable storage units. Amend city chapter code eleven, section eleven oh five D and eleven point oh seven A, additional food service and home occupancy on street parking, and vacate public right-of-way, which is a petition. It'll all be on next Monday at six thirty, anyone wishes to attend? If not?
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
I voted to approve the agenda, but it says rich, that's, should be rich.
Actually, it's not, there's no R in the plaque.
Yeah, there, there's a little discrepancy in there whether or not there's an R or not in that plaque.
Yeah, because another place I saw the R.
Yeah.
Okay, close enough then.
Every other time it's burning, it's burning every other way. That, we will adjourn to a recess to close the city council meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point oh five, subdivision three, C three, land sale, one, fifty-five Southeast Bird Avenue, and number two, nine eleven South Limburg Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention, at this point and for the public, we'll be developing proposals to discuss with these property owners, and I don't anticipate coming back in open session other than to adjourn. At such point down the road as, if there's an agreement that we could reach, then we would come out into open session and discuss the proposal that was made and what was agreed upon. But at this point, we would be developing proposals and not coming back in the closed session, I don't anticipate at this point.